And I'll call the orders, Swan County Board of Commissioners Budget Work Session, April twenty second, two thousand twenty-five, four P M. Gunnar, please.
Based to colors, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. So our items for discussion this evening is the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. I may start off, everybody, Ms. Elise. Elise came to us last week and talked to us about a subject that she thought would be very vital for the county to explore and look at. And I asked her if she could come to our budget work session and explain this to everyone. And that way we'd all be on the same page, but it's all right.
Okay, I hope everyone got the email that I sent. I did send the email with attachments of what I'm saying tonight. Graham County has been caring for their cemetery since nineteen fifty-seven. Swain County does nothing for their cemetery. So I think that's something we need to address. Of course, now Robbins, Swain, Graham County put in a six cent tax. However, they had so much accumulated in two thousand eleven, they had to transfer that. They didn't have to, but they did transfer that money back to the general fund. And so I've went through, I'm here with the Heritage Board. We've got some members, there's Emma Waldrop and Rita Jones and Diane Kirkland and Jim Daffett, and that's part of our Heritage Board. And we had, we went to Graham County and talked with them about how they set this up. But whenever we went through it, there's a lot of bills and different things that have to be done that I think we can just make another department for the county and make it a cemetery maintenance crew. And I have an option too, if you have the papers that I handed out or that I emailed to you. It just sort of is a starting point because I'm not, that's looking at maybe having five members as a maintenance crew to take care of the cemeteries, to mow and trim bushes. Of course, if there's any big trees, that would have to be contracted out. But I think we need to look at that. I have the budget for Graham County, which is like three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. But going with a five man crew and buying the equipment, the thing about this first starting out, of course, we have to buy all the equipment and everything to start with. So I come up with like two hundred and fifty-four thousand, fifty-three dollars. That's for vehicle, trailer, fuel, gas supplies, and the equipment needed to mow, plus salaries. So I think we need to look at that. And it is a work in process. What we can do is maybe start with three people and see, you know, how long it's going to take to do these cemeteries. And I think we need to set some limitations on that. For one thing, the reservation, although it's part of Swain County, they care for their own cemeteries. And they're supposed to be sending me a list of all the ones so that we know which ones they do take care of. And then the ones that are in the park, as you well know, you can't tear a weed up without getting permission. So we would not maintain those. And also set a limit on the number of graves, a limit of at least a hundred graves in a cemetery before we would maintain it. Because otherwise you may be going out and mowing somebody's yard because they have like one grave or something. So I hope you'll look at this and think about this because I think it's time that we did something. Our cemeteries are in really bad shape. And the ones that are trying to take care of it that are aging to where they're not able to take care of them. So do you have any questions?
Would that include all the cemeteries like Swain Memorial Park?
Yes.
The one up on Schoolhouse Hill? They maintain their own.
And that's something we can look at. If they have some kind of agreement and their, their maintenance is otherwise, then we would not include them. And also I wanted to contact each cemetery because some of them might not want our, you know, a crew to come in and maintain them. And we would have to have a permission signed by each cemetery, I think.
I know in the past, a couple of cemeteries where the storm brought trees in and we had cleaned them up.
Yeah, like Walking Cemetery, that was, yeah, yeah. And I think we need to look at doing this. Our, you know, if Graham County can do this, surely Swain County can do this. And maybe we can use some of the money from the North Shore settlement. I mean, what better way? Because the people that were moved from down there weren't just moved to Luata Cemetery. They were distributed through all the cemeteries nearly in Swain County. And they, if it's not them, it's their descendants that's buried there. So it's kind of like honoring them through the funds that came from that North Shore settlement.
Anybody else got any question, comments, concerns?
I believe it's a good idea. I believe we could narrow it way down. I see several here that stood well to cure it. Walking Cemetery right above my house. It needs a lot of work. Me and Kenneth, when he sat here beside me, we went up there and he took his crew up there and cleaned it up last year. But they saw them like Swain Memorial, my cemetery, Mason Branch. We, the people pays for it to be cleaned, you know, as we have decorations. They raise money. I, I see some that's, I recognize about all of these, but most, most of them, the people take care of theirself. You know, usually the ones that don't have a decoration or nothing, a decoration day, that's the ones that gets in bad shape. It's a shame to let them get that.
Is there a way we can narrow some of this down?
I think so. I think some of those cemeteries could be. And, you know, Graham County takes care of nine thousand two hundred and fifty graves a month, a month. And they have ninety-two cemeteries that they maintain.
You said they've got a five man crew?
Yeah. So, you know, maybe we could start with a three man crew and see how that goes. Because this is going to be a learning experience on which ones we need to clean and which ones we don't, so.
If they needed equipment, it probably wouldn't be any heavy equipment.
Right.
If they needed any heavy equipment, we could probably use some maintenance.
Right. And, and if it does end up in a situation in the winter where it's slow, this crew could help the building and grounds department, you know, if they're painting or doing inside work that they could use the help.
Well, yeah, on the buildings and ground, they're asking for more mowers, weed eaters, and lake blowers anyway. So that could be part of that as well.
So you might want to just expand the building and grounds department, you know, and just add more people so that the cemeteries can be part of the maintenance.
That'd probably be the easiest route to go.
Might be, it's true.
Since you've already got the equipment.
I, I think it'd be probably the easiest route if we, if we done it that way. But also, because I've worked for the county before.
So have I.
You get a job, then you get ten more jobs. And so you get pulled from the job that you're supposed to be doing to do stuff that you didn't know you was going to do. We want to make sure if we do that, that they are actually doing that.
Actually, that's kind of why I said maybe a separate department. Because it could turn into where they're actually doing more of the maintenance, you know, than doing the cemeteries.
It happens involuntary, so.
That's true. Any other questions?
Do you know, it could, it could fall even as temporary because you would just need it in the summer.
Yeah, we talked about that on our meeting about maybe getting some younger guys that maybe we'd eat here in the summer. We done that on before. Maybe see what it looks like and then, but we, you still kind of need some kind of supervisor. Make sure that whoever's doing it, doing it right.
Absolutely.
I hope we can please everybody with this because some cemeteries don't agree with having them mowed and grassed.
Well, that's why I said.
Others have to be mounted up, and that's, that can be touchy for some people. And it was a hard time at Laurel Branch because Midway Baptist Church owns Laurel Branch.
Right.
And we pay someone to do all the mowing. And we left it at the discretion of the, the families. If they want to mound up, they could go mound them. But if not, we would mow everything.
Right. And I think that's great. That's a good idea.
Do it that way or, and those that, that don't want theirs leveled down and sown, then they can maintain them. I mean, you have to, you have to give people.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Some option, even though.
And I did think I'd go to Chris Funeral Home and get a list of who, cemeteries that they have and who is in charge of them so that I can contact that person. And I think we need a signed form saying that you're aware that this, they're going to come in and mow and make sure that it's signed and agreed to.
I'm in charge of Laurel Branch Cemetery, but.
Okay, I'll be talking to you.
I can't make that decision on my own. I'd have to bring it back to the churches because they do hold the deed for the property. And right now we have someone who comes in and mows and we pay them.
Right.
And some of these smaller church cemeteries, they may want to turn theirs over to the county as far as like doing it because they probably don't have enough, sometimes they don't have enough people.
They don't have enough people and enough resources. And that's usually what happens, you know, to do that. It's expensive. And if you don't educate your young men of your community or your, your family that when I'm dead and gone, my boys know they're going to mow the cemetery because that's their, that's what they're supposed to do.
And we wish every family would do that.
I know, but I understand maybe they don't have any descendants.
That's true.
To hand that task down to, so. You know, it's something that we've thought about for years, I guess. Just never did really investigate what Graham done, but, but, you know, they do take care of all of theirs.
They are, they are amazing. They literally cover up the graves. They said the only funeral home that covers the graves is Chris Funeral Home. That if another funeral home does the funeral there, this crew actually goes out and covers the graves.
Same way.
But Cherokee does that too, I think. So, you know, that wouldn't be part of what we would do.
Not really. Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay.
We will consider this.
Now let Ms. Lottie lead us in the next direction.
So the next thing that we'll look at is the emergency management budget, the larger sheet that you have. So the reason that it's coming to all to look at instead of the department meetings is because there's not really a department. Urban is the part-time fire marshal. That's the only person that's in this budget right now. There are positions budgeted in there. So in that second line of the budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, this is where the full-time fire marshal, as well as the three maintenance positions that we're going to be going to the fire departments and the rescue squad, were all budgeted. So I wanted to have a conversation about this budget. What does it need to look like next year? You know, we've talked about salaries obviously tied to how many people you have and what you're paying them. And then your health insurance is tied to your number of people. FICA and retirement are going to be percentages of your salary. And then, of course, you have just your normal things. The, those are, have probably been the same. You'll see what was kind of spent the year before. Some things were not spent, minimal was spent because again, there's not been a lot of full-time work in this department. So as far as telephone, travel, repairing of equipment and vehicles, disaster relief fund, postage, fuel supplies, contracted services, dues and subscriptions, all of those would kind of stay the same. Capital outlay is going to be if there's any kind of big expenses that, that department would need. So I just wanted to kind of have a general conversation about emergency management to see where we're thinking about going next year. We have had the three maintenance positions advertised. We have not had anyone apply for those. So we, we've had people apply for the fire marshal as well. The salary was not within range for them. So that's the reason that that's still vacant as well.
These three positions we're talking about, that's the people at the fire departments? At each fire department, is that what?
Yes, that's what it was going to be.
They're not going to be classified as a fireman. They're going to be classified as a maintenance man.
That's how they were classified to begin with. But that's why we can't recruit people because they're classified as maintenance and they're paid probably thirty-four, thirty-six thousand a year is what's in the budget. So I think that that has been a deterrent because they are, they would be certified firefighters.
So how much do they want? How much is a certified par?
Well, if we're looking at comparing around the area, it's between forty-six to, and forty-eight thousand a year.
How much for a fire marshal?
Most of the applications that were turned in were between sixty to seventy-five thousand.
This is something we really don't have to do.
Fire marshal, we do have to do some. The, the maintenance positions, no. But I know that there have been public hearings and things from the community where they want those paid positions in those departments.
Yeah, we heard from a whole lot of people that there was none of them local. I think we will leave it alone. That would save, you said forty-six, forty-seven thousand times three in retirement? What would you be talking?
Probably a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand for those three positions.
That would go a long way with some of the stuff that we're wanting to do. Our school, all of the things we've got to do with it. Our animal shelter, I know it's over budget. How is the, the home, is it still budgeted or over budgeted? We're good on that. I think, I think we could leave that. If we're cutting just our maintenance, as maintenance, just leave it alone. It's something we don't have to have. It's not, not necessary. This day and time, I think we would look at the necessaries more than wants. That's just my opinion.
Well, I think if we put a paid fireman in each one of these positions, the response time is going to be cut off because that truck can roll. It's like the fire we had up on Larka. If it'd been somebody that are at that building to jump in the truck, they might have stopped that fire. And that fire costed over a million dollars. Then again, they might not have stopped it. There's always a chance they could have.
See. The response time being no different to go to Fontana Estates. How it's going to make any difference. Larka Islands, it's not going to make no difference.
I disagree with you on that. If there's a man sitting up there with a truck, you know, the, the response time is going to be fifteen to twenty minutes anyway. By the time somebody rolls from their house to the department, gets a vehicle or their job to the department.
How long does it take to drive from the gate at Fontana Estates to the far end?
Seems like forever.
Well, that forever.
But it's about seven miles out there.
That forever ain't going to help a bit when that man at on.
Well, you're talking about one section.
That's just one section.
For some of the remote places, you're not going to have a real quick response there. Fontana Trace up on the mountain though, you don't have real quick response time on that. Even though you got a party department right there. Because it's going to take you twenty minutes to get to the top of that mountain.
Regardless with the other two positions, our fire marshal position needs to be done. We have to have that. I mean, there's no if and buts about that. We have to get that filled full-time. I know Urban wants to step away, step down. You know, we, we need to have the fire marshal position full-time.
I think what determines a lot of people from fire marshal, you're on call twenty-four seven. And if you leave town for something, you gotta have somebody take your place.
There is fire investigators. They deputize fire investigators. That special deputies that do that in, in his absence, you know. But they're supposed to all be in on all the planning and all of the investigation as much as possible.
As long as we don't have to raise taxes, are you two to sit out there at the fire department? When it comes to raising taxes, not, I mean, you're talking about, we're talking about Larka Islands. Half of them people don't learn, they ain't got home insurance. You're going to ask them to pay more out of pocket? So you can get these people's insurance a little higher that bill on top? We didn't tell them to build up. Well, you can't get nothing. We didn't tell them to go out here to Fontana Estates and build fourteen mile out through there. Why should the local people that can't even afford home insurance to begin with, pay for these people's insurance to come down a little bit? I don't, I don't understand what we're, what we're benefiting, the people we're trying to benefit.
Anybody else? The, the thing about all of that is, is the more valuable home that you have, the more you'd pay. And if people can't afford to pay that, then I guess they just wouldn't have to pay it. You know, it's, it's a double-edged sword, any way you go. We had, what, a hundred and some people here the other one night asking us to try to figure out some way to do it. There is a way to do it. And of course, every dollar that's accumulated, I know, Mr. Loftus, you think about how that it's a tax dollar. Well, some of it is, but we can do this by imposing a fee and not have to call it a tax because all of those people were for paying more so that they would have somebody there at these stations that could roll the trucks. And, you know, I just can't turn an F here to those people either.
I take a solution. It's less than two years away from the next election. Put it on the ballot and let the people of Swain County want to know if they want a tax to pay for it or not and see what happens. Would that not be the fairest way to do it?
It probably would, but it'll never pass. I don't think it'll ever pass.
Because all them people that showed up here, they ain't got a residency. They go to the residents of Florida where you don't have to pay tax.
Well, we've got several people sitting out here in the galley right now. And they probably would like to see better protection and a lower insurance rating. And I'd rather not pay my, my money to my insurance company. I'd rather see it spent locally for fire protection.
Let's put it on, let's put it on the ballot. How hard would it be? We've done, we've done without it forever. What's going to be another year and a half? It'll be time for them to drum them up a lot of reasons, a lot of backing. Or it'll be time for the local people to step up and say, no, we don't want it. Let's see which way it goes.
Pay or no fee, taxes or no tax, when your house catches so far, you won't see a truck coming.
Well, everybody's definitely.
Right.
And as soon as possible.
Quicker the better. I'll agree with Mr. Lawson on the fire marshal issue. I think that we got to figure out a way to fill that position right away. And I'd like to leave the, the slots that we have designated for maintenance people for the fire departments and rescue squad, just like it is. I don't know where the extra money can be cut from or whatever to make that fire marshal's position more enticing, but there is a lot of responsibility with that. It's a mandy job and when there's a fire, you have to go, so.
And the people that we interviewed were not, you know, they understood the on-call and they were good with the whole job and the position. It was just the salary.
The salaries not being compared to people around us.
If we cut that overtime back, even at one, we could boost the salary for a fire marshal up to where we'd be in pretty good shape to give one, I believe. I mean, we had over a million something in overtime. That's a lot of overtime.
Could we cut one of those positions and just have two positions? And then maybe raise the salary with, with that third position for the fire marshal position? And then maybe put a little bit more salary in the, those two positions for the, the firefighters?
That's a good idea. You're talking about somebody being in the truck and getting gone. You just need one man to drive the truck.
There you might, you might get up to where the firefighters need to be, need to be paid. You're not raising taxes. You might be able to raise, raise up the pay for a fire marshal high enough to hire somebody for that.
The three paid firemen you're talking about, Alarca West and the other one, the rescue squad. Hope we can start off with the two.
One of the days, the first day I've heard about the rescue squad. And I don't reckon I've met Mr. Harry Meeting to where we was going to pay nobody in the rescue squad. When did it come up?
It's been out the whole time.
It was the, one of the three maintenance positions. Yeah, when, when that was brought in, what, year or more ago?
I'd say the rescue squad and the fire department is going to be, the county fire department is going to be combined as one unit, fire and rescue.
Well, I think that's the way that it's leading.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Move on to?
And Phillip kind of talked about service fee. That was one of the things that the Personnel Committee did bring. So I did get some parcel numbers, we're still kind of reviewing as far as dollar amounts and numbers. The general statute that talks about fees is very vague. So we have a little over, about fifty-five hundred vacant parcels, a little over seven thousand residential, and then six hundred ninety-one overnight. That's our estimate right now. It was a quick number. And depending on what that fee was said, obviously, lower for vacant land residential and then overnight. If we set it at a hundred, a hundred twenty-five, and one fifty, that would bring in about one point five million in revenue for the next year. So that was some numbers specific to the service fee.
And that service fee would be going for fire protection?
Yeah, it would be, it would be designated specific for that.
So we upped the charges to cover the fire? To cover our own people?
What do you mean?
You said we was upping the service fees? Is that what you just said?
No, no, the service fee that we can enact on the property tax that Phillip was talking about. If we added a fee instead of increasing a, a tax at a tax rate.
Well, now, you explained the difference between a fee and a tax.
Well, a tax has to go on the ballot and be. Well, a tax has to go on the ballot and be, um, voted. And a fee can be enacted by the board of commissioners.
But it's both really the same very. Get that money out of your pocket.
Yeah, it is.
Nothing's never really out. We just rent them. And if we don't pay the rent, we get evicted. County gets it. But the cost of these departments running them every year goes up, everything goes up.
But that was just an option the personnel committee had brought forth. So I tried to just gather some numbers so that we would have an idea if that was. Um, a further discussion for a fee. And then the other paper that you have is special appropriations. The smaller one. So this is basically kinda everybody else that asks for money. So the middle column is the requested, um, as you see, the fire departments and the rescue squad. Those are blank because normally those dollar amounts remain the same every year. Um, prices in cities did increase. So they will be presenting something, uh, for that as well. Then the next one after that is the library. So they have asked for two hundred and seventy thousand. So as you see, last year they got two fifty-five. So they've asked for an increase this year. The next section is schools. So the board of education. And then the SCC local site expense. So the first five are specific. To, uh, what Mr. Sell presented in their joint meeting as far as their requests. So you can see those numbers there. And then the SCC local site expense. Last year they were given a hundred and fifty thousand. They've asked for three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars this year. They have a replacement of, I think it said eight HVAC units. I mean, it was. Replacing pretty much everything there, I'm pretty sure. Um. Yeah. So it's operating and administrative expenses. Capital request for replacing seven HVAC units and then a septic system repair pending design. So there is some additional. So, uh, they were given. The year before, they were given a hundred and seventy-three thousand total because they did have some capital expense. But they've asked for operational expenses of a hundred and ninety-eight and capital expense of a hundred and fifty-six. So that's where you're getting that three hundred and fifty-four thousand totaled. For the SCC site at Alman.
What, what exactly do they do? I drive by there every day. All I ever see is five or six canoes sticking up out of the ground. Wha- wha- what do they do?
They're, they're offering classes. I don't, you know, he presented us those numbers, but I don't know. I mean, I don't participate in the classes.
What?
I'm not sure. I think it's the po- pottery is one of the biggest ones. They've started doing the GED stuff again. Um, and then there's, there was something else I just saw.
Cooking classes. The, the, it's outdoor leadership, I think.
Okay.
Class for the.
N O C, yeah.
N O C had something going there.
Is that worth three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of Swain County's money, a cooking class? And a, and a kayaking class?
Well, the, so there's a general statute that states that we have to fund community colleges as well. So not that we have to give them what they ask for because it's not, they've asked for more than what has been given before. But, um, we are responsible for the maintenance of the building. So we do the. Mowing and care of the outside as well. We clean the building for them. So there's some other things that the county is contributing. As far as SCC goes, but that was just their request of the things that they're gonna have to replace.
And it went from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty-four thousand?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the, the hundred and fifty last year was for operational expenses only and they actually increased that forty-eight thousand on its own. So they increased that to a hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Are we obligated? Is it allowed that we have to have SCC out there teaching this?
That I don't know. I know, like I said, there's a general statute that states that we have to fund it, but I don't know if we have to have them in the county. I'm not sure how that part of the general statute works.
We may be better off to, uh. To rent it to, to rent it to anybody. And be a making money instead of going in a hole with it, you know?
Well, they actually own the, they own that property. It's dated to them. Yeah.
I really don't understand how that happened back in nineteen ninety-three.
It blew my mind. I didn't.
Ninety-three, they've owned it. We keep it up and they own it.
Let's let them keep it up and do their own thing. That would save the, right there, right there would be your firefighters, your, uh, your. Your, uh, fire marshal. And everything in one go.
Well, and I think the issue is with that general statute, we just have to make sure what, what are we legally required to provide for them? As a community college in our county. We would have to, we would have to look at that. Just read it a little bit more in detail to see. What it states we have to provide for them.
I don't know, never met many college graduates with a degree in pottery. A hundred and fifty thousand is what they got last year.
Mm-hmm.
That's quite a bit of an increase for what they're asking.
Well, and like I said, they, that was under the operational expenses. So that's utilities, supplies, service contracts, that sort of thing. They increased that by forty-eight thousand. The, the rest of it is capital. The HVAC and septic is a hundred and fifty-six, almost a hundred and fifty-seven.
You know, if it's raining again in the morning, I'm gonna go on the pack. I'm gonna go in and see what's going on. Not been in there since it was a school.
I've had several classes there, but you know, they were at night and we had an instructor and all that, so. It's a good thing. If it's the right class, it'll keep you from driving to Silva or to Franklin. But they don't offer every class that they offer in Silva and Franklin. That's the problem. And a lot of people are still having to drive anywhere.
See what, see what it would take it for us to get them away from that. If it's their building, let them operate and have that one.
No, we'll look at the general statute and see what, what we have to.
The law.
Yeah, we'll see what they say and try to figure that out for sure. See what that dollar amount really should be or needs to be. Um, then we'll step on down. So there's two mental health. So this is Vaya. So the six thousand is an estimate. So it's called ABC Rehab because so many cents per. Um, bottle that is sold goes to Vaya. So they just send us. An amount every month and we have to pay it based on what the state sends them. So that's the estimated. Sometimes it's a little bit lower. Sometimes it's a little bit higher. And then the twenty thousand dollars is a county appropriation. So they request a maintenance of effort. From the county, um, in order to serve eligible residents and their request, and it has been for several years, twenty thousand dollars. Then the next group under that is State of Franklin. So when we go through State of Franklin, we have the senior aid program. So they did not want. That dollar amount changed for State of Franklin. It's gonna stay, ask for it to stay at the eighty-four hundred. And then we have rope, which is their transportation money for transit. And it's a lot tied in with DOT and Medicaid. So this is their estimate. Of what they're going to get. So last year they got a hundred and seven. So they're estimating they'll get a hundred and twenty-three this year. That's just pass-through money. We don't contribute anything in that one. The nutrition program, they've asked to remain the same. That's gonna be their meals on wheels, which, um. Comes through special funding. So again, that's why they know that they've asked for that to remain the same. Elderly assistance as well. I was gonna see what Lisa had put. Um. This is for their wellness classes that they provide for, uh, the people that are there during the day. So again, remaining the same. And then we have the transit match. So this dollar amount is for, um, transit specific. So this is the operations. Yes, which is, um, it's a fifty percent DOT required match for them. And then down below that, you have the local, State of Franklin local transit at forty thousand. So that's also a match at the state level. And with that, with the, um, State of Franklin, the higher the local match, they get more. Uh, state money. So if we increase that a little bit, they get more money, um, than what they were getting. She has requested a few more new part-time staff. So there are two new lines for them. The twenty-two thousand, um, four hundred and fifty-three is for one part-time kitchen staff position. And then they ask for a hundred and twenty thousand as a new line for transit operating funds. So this is to help just overall. Transit operations. So the, um, those dollar amounts above. For rope and that are part of transit, but they have asked for additional county funds. This is the first year that they have done that. So when I talked to Lisa, we had looked at, last year they requested a hundred and two thousand. Eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and they were actually approved for eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-five. And they've requested two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And thirty-eight dollars is what those dollar amounts total to. So again, there's some additional. Funding requests in there for their programs that they're operating. Um, there. And, oh, go ahead.
I went out there and ate seven times. With the people out there. They, they have good meals for the people. Sometimes a whole lot of people are, sometimes not many. If I had a, a wish list, I wish we could pay, finish paving that. And pave the, the heritage. Place down there, pave their parking lot too. Which I believe we talked about it before. Senior's concreted, it might be just as cost effective to go in and concreted than to pave it. It should have the concrete. I can check and see what the difference would be. You get a price on the paving and see what it would be to do, have our crew to do the concrete. I believe it'd make it look, look a lot better when it was all.
And what, what this is, is, you know, their, their big wish list, just like for all of our departments, like what all do we want? So as we go through this, this is kinda the final thing to get that bottom. Number for us to say, if we met every single request. This is what your expense is gonna look like as a county. So. So that's why that hundred and twenty. They're reaching for the sky is essentially what they're doing.
Most of the smaller stuff, there's not too much of an increase on it yet.
The one, I'm sorry.
They've not asked mu- for much of an increase on the smaller.
Right. And then the next two are our own departments. So those have. Um, so social services and health department are special appropriations. So of course, you know, you see Cali presenting that they're in a deficit. Ev- every time. So what that is, is when you look at the first line, there's, you know, amounts given to them and then. Over the request is probably what they would have actually needed. Um, to zero their budget out with a deficit. I mean, we're still gonna cover that no matter what. So, but I think as a county, we need to know what is that real expense from the get-go. Versus us seeing the deficit on the finance officer report to say. Okay, well, we know we're covering this because we have to do these things. But where, you know, where's the money coming from? So at least we can see upfront. The needs instead of waiting till the, till the end. So, um. That's, so it looks like huge jumps for them and it is, but that's because. Those are true, what I would call true county dollar amounts that will be needed. Um, so Koala, Swain Koala Safe is, um, last year they asked for thirty thousand. This year they have asked for thirty-five. I'm sure everyone knows they are a nonprofit organization that deal with victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And I did talk to their, um, program director, Laura, and we got some. Uh, we asked for some county funding impact numbers. So what she sent us was that they had served a total of eight hundred and three clients. In county was six hundred and thirty-eight and out of county was a hundred and sixty-five. And, um, they, they also accompany clients to court. They've assisted three hundred and five of those. They've assisted with protection orders, a hundred and nine of those. And then they've also provided nights in the shelter. A total of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine. So they asked for a small increase and a lot of that is because they do receive federal pass-through money and. There was some cuts and things that are gonna be changing for them at the federal level as well as the state level this coming year. So. Again, just the five thousand dollar increase from them.
Mr. Chairman, where does Swain co- where's their safe house in Swain County?
Yes.
Governor's Island.
Yeah, I was gonna say. And I think they do look for grants and things because they are a nonprofit. So I think they try to cover some of that, but, um. As far as I understand, the county has always given some type of appropriation to them.
Thirty thousand dollars what we gave them last year?
Yes.
So they're not asking for a big increase.
The Humane Society, I'm not really sure what that is. So I'm gonna have to do some more digging. Um, it, it doesn't look like it's been used. I think at one time we used it for. Yeah. Spain. So because we don't do that, um, that will be removed.
What did we do with the twenty thousand dollars last year if we don't do that?
It's just sitting there.
Still in the budget.
Yeah. You would see it as a budgeted item, but nothing expensed out of it. Nothing paid out of that loan. Um, then the next four are specific to JCPC and Southwestern Commission. So, um, JCPC we get allocations from. So the, the last one where it says JCPC expenses, that's the amount that the county keeps. For that program. And then the county match above that is an allocation, the rest, the difference of the two. And then you have the Southwestern Planning, which is what JCPC gives to organizations like Hawthorne, Paysetters, that sort of thing. Um, that dollar amount is also set pretty much every year. And then that middle line is what we give to Southwestern Commission. So Southwestern Commission. Has many things. They do, um, elderly, they do DOT stuff. They have lots of different. Programs that they help and fund. It's a regional effort on the, um. For, you also hear them called Region A is what Southwestern Planning is. So, so there's money given to them. They have lots of things. They help. You know, find and write grants and do things with economic development. So there's a lot of things, um, given. That they're providing services for us as well. And then, uh, debt service principle is left blank because. We could give a decent number if we know we're not taking on any debt service. But if we're going to have to. Take on debt for any purchases for this year, that number will change. So we will just need to, that'll have to fluctuate based on, are we taking on debt or what are we gonna do kinda thing? And then we do not use that bond service, bond interest. That cap code is not used. So again, it's sitting there. It will come out this next year. Nothing's paid out of it. Legal service is gonna be the attorney. Um, it's, that's the estimate I did review back and it's minimal spend. There's never been thirty thousand spent out of there in a year. Um, NC forestry, that is what we give the forest service. They actually send a request. And they have a budget breakdown and this is the. and they have a budget breakdown and this is the small amount the state does the rest and then they ask the county for an amount. And then the last one is the transfer to public safety capital. So that's the amounts that are transferred into that fund for those uh, fire departments and rescue squad to purchase larger pieces. Cali keeps those in a different area. We have a different bank account and she keeps a spreadsheet with those amounts because they do roll over from year to year. So they don't have to spend those funds. The top funds, they do have to spend every year or they go away, but that bottom one, we have to transfer that money into there. That's a requirement. And then it can sit there if they want to roll it and you know, build it up to purchase something large.
Mr. Chairman, that's North Carolina Forest Service is, is, is what we're talking?
Mm-hmm, that eighty thousand.
Wh- wh- why? Why would we give them eighty thousand?
Well, they have, because they have a person here. They have, you know, a how, a, a person housed above on past. The question in the audience. So I don't know if that was just a longstanding agreement. I just know that they sent the request, so.
What, what would he use, John?
Well, he is the for- forest service person.
He puts up fires.
I was gonna say, I don't know if it's the same.
He goes through the permits that you go down here, the hardware store and buy if you're gonna burn brush on your property. Be a lot of permit. And if uh, they have a ban, of course, then he cites people for having fires. And there was quite a few citations, I think, written. This last deal, because when the state of North Carolina tells you there's a burning ban, that means all outside fires, any outside fire. The general public evidently didn't catch that clue. Uh, you know, within a hundred feet of a structure. So you couldn't have any kind of a fire out there. But this line item here is to pay salary for, uh, you have a district uh, ranger in the area and also a smoke chaser, if I'm not mistaken. Which there, it's, it goes to help pay their salary. And it is uh, either, either you can pay that or you don't have that person in your county. And we've, we've always had it in.
He must make a pretty good salary if this just goes to help pay his salary.
No, that, the request, they had a whole budget. So there was salary and then you know, like ours, the rest of the things that are tied to salary or FICA um, retirement. And then they had like expenses throughout the budget. So that is just a percentage of their budget that they consider a county, a county dollar.
I reckon. I know the last fire out here, they, they work long hours. I appreciate our, our people who's uh, willing to try to put the woods out before it gets to the next half.
So this is the last of the budget stuff to digest. And so um, we need to talk probably some more meetings to kind of have everything compiled together for those numbers, those kind of final numbers. What's it gonna look like? What is the, the plan to move forward?
You got anything else?
Last year's numbers was five million eight hundred and forty-three, right?
Mm-hmm.
This year it's wanting to jump to seven million.
And not all the blanks are filled in. But that's because I put what, what the actual request was. So like the board of ed, their current expense wasn't a million. They asked for one point eight this year. So uh, SEC, so local had that increase, you know, two hundred thousand. So everywhere that you've seen an increase is where that dollar amount is changing for. And like I said, for social services and health department, it, it's mandated. We can let them run a deficit like, like this, or we see what true dollar amount do we need is why I put those in there.
So if we went, if we just went with this whole budget, five, five, actually we'll drive it easy, wouldn't it, Bobby?
Hmm, I guess. Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
I think maybe that's what we ought to do.
I don't know that that one will stay accurate just because of debt service. So that's, that's definitely one that um, is unknown still. And I think not having something from the town for the Tuckasee G Fire District um, for that to come to us to present a dollar amount. I think that that is another kind of question mark in the air sort of thing.
The towns are always pressuring us for more money to run the opposite way. What would it cost us? Could we get grants and stuff? And, and build us a forest station up there? And then where's this number at we've got with Bryson City?
It's seventy thousands on there.
Seventy thousand? Just take that back and build our own and say, here you go. You put a fire out in Bryson City and we'll deal with it.
Well, and I think, you know, that would jump back to then this other budget, your emergency management budget, because then you're gonna have to fund those other people over there.
We could, i- if we could get grants, we're always getting grants. Let's just build us another forest station. A- a- and, and uh, go from there. And then we let, we let them not pressure us.
That paid firefighter would be one step toward that. If you got a paid, the rescue squad combining with the fire department, that would be one step toward that. And I'd say we could get grants to build a building. Might even get a piece of property donated.
I'd even get one donated to us.
Yeah.
Let's look at that a little closer. What do you think? And, and, and if we can go that route, I'll even vote for the paid for.
I'm agreeing. I, I know talking to the insurance agents, that's, that, they're not talking about paid firefighter. They're talking about buildings. You know, that's what I hear from, from them is that, you know, it's not necessarily that we need paid firefighters. It's that we need more substations or nor, or a substation elsewhere. That's what's gonna help our, our stuff. And so, and I've talked to more than just what's in our, our town here. I've talked to a lot of them. And so I think maybe having that, that vision of having that pulse with paid firefighters would help us.
Well, that seventy thousand would pay one, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's one.
I mean, I love Bryson City and I respect the boys. It does what they do here. But they pressure us as we're not gonna do this unless you do that. And, and I never have been like to be pressured.
Not when you got options.
But we could build a building, you know, minimal use of county labor to do it. And if we get a grant to build a building, the expense of the material wouldn't be a big, big deal. Just getting the property to build it, that would be the biggest issue.
Maybe it's a good hard out there somewhere to donate us.
We'd even put a plaque on the building saying these people donated that property. Done that before.
It's worth looking into. I agree. Worst thing you can, we can't find nothing.
I agree. I think it's better to pay us than pay them. It's just a way, that's the nature of business. Business, you keep it in-house as much as you can. I get that.
Well, if we did put a substation up toward Weedy or up the Governor's Island section, I don't think you'd hear any complaints.
Oh, no.
How much properties is the school at West now right there? Just what it's built on that.
At West Alimentary, I think just what they, they.
They, they got a little bit more, but it's gonna set just a minute. Across the road.
Yeah.
It's gonna set. But we do have the property at High Creek.
If we could get SCC just to give that property back out there somewhere, it'd be a good place.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be one, yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious. Someone will go out there tomorrow. Let's just see what goes on.
That's a big one. It deals.
Well, if we could get them to, I don't understand why they wanna own it. I really don't. If the county has to provide everything, maintain the building, keep everything going, mow the grass.
A hundred percent thought we did on it because that's what we were doing.
Well, I was gonna say, that's why they want to.
And then I'm thinking, I'm not, why are you doing this?
They, they did the Southwestern Community College back in nineteen ninety-three.
And I asked that question.
I don't know why.
I asked that question to the young.
I don't even know who was in office in ninety-three, but.
Asked that question to the Southwestern Director, whatever you call him.
And he didn't know why.
He didn't know why, but he did quote that general statute to me.
Right, oh yeah, that the county has to provide it.
Well, I'll kind of agree with David on that. Uh, you know, if, if we're doing the maintenance and stuff on it, let them do the maintenance on it.
But there's a general statute that says.
On track with.
It says something about, I've read it. It says something about if you have a a college like that, a community college within your county, that we, that the county has to supply upkeep, maintenance on structure. Keep the program, help keep the program. I don't know who wrote that up, why I wrote, why they wrote that up, but it really don't make a lot of sense to me.
Mr. Chairman, how, how did the Weedy School? It, is it, it was owned by the county too?
At one time we owned that building. We had that.
How did he?
I have no idea.
What about a lark?
I don't know if they um, auctioned it off or had to bid, sell bid on it, or I don't know how they got any private hands. I really don't remember.
You talking about a bad deal. That was a bad deal, though.
What about a lark? Is, do we own it or?
I, I think we do own it, but it was somehow or another either deeded to the community or something.
It's divided off. So we own where the playground, the bathrooms are, and the other.
The other is divided. They pretty much have the buildings.
Back to the community as a community building. Which I get that.
I mean, that's fine. That was fine to do that. That, they needed space and it's a great space. But like I say, I don't, I don't, I don't understand even how it was ever deeded to Southwestern Community College when uh, everybody knew at the time they weren't gonna bring their main campus down here, you know, they're set up to be in Silva. So.
Say we get our attorney looking into that general statute, see if we can figure out exactly what that general statute.
Yeah, what it means, yeah.
And does it apply to us? And when does it not apply? And can you switch? Can you go, so there's other col- community colleges that say, wanna try county? Could you just say, oh, what? Wanna try county? So I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not sure. Plus they're, you know, they're in the school too. So I don't know how that crosses over the general statute where there's there's some involvement in the high school. So I don't know how that. I don't know how that crosses into the general statute as well. So no, I'll do some digging on that. Get some better information specific for that.
You got anything else? We got this old, old list. Are you gonna get us another list?
Yes, I'll get you an updated list since all the departments have been met with um, of our, I think David referred to as our Sears uh, Christmas wishlist.
Our wishlist.
Yes, so we'll get, we'll get that uh, updated for all the departments if we want to set up. I think this was the last budget meeting that we actually had scheduled. So if we want to set up some more of those, um, our goal is have everything finalized with a number. Of course, by the end of May, that'd be the latest. That, that's the best case scenario, latest so that it can be on display for ten days before it has to be approved for July one. So.
You did a setup for each department. Last year's budget's gonna request.
Yeah, yeah, like this one that you got for emergency management, I'm working on those for all the departments now. So, and that, those will tie to that wish, you know, you'll be able to see those, that, how they tie to the wishlist dollars and stuff, so.
All right, if we don't have anything else.
Do we, do we wanna set?
Oh, does it date? We can set a date, yeah.
No, the, looks like the first meeting in May, the regular work session would be the sixth.
Yeah, I think we have one, one Tuesday. The twenty-ninth is next, the next Tuesday. And then our work session's the sixth and our regular session's the twentieth. So I don't know if we want to allocate the thirteenth and twenty-seventh just in case.
Let's do the thirteenth and twenty-seventh. And if we don't need the twenty-seventh, then we can always not have it, but we can do the thirteenth for sure.
Same time, four to six?
I think so.
The thirteenth?
Yes.
Are we, are we adding the twenty-ninth too, or for next week or are we just?
I say let's skip next week. We don't, we don't need it. I don't think. We, we, we pretty went through everything.
No, that'll give me time to get all the, the numbers and everything in. And then also look at the revenue side, which is the, the one side that I haven't uh, really explored yet to see what have we received this year um, in revenue. What are we gonna look, what will it look like next year uh, sort of thing? So I'll work on those two to have something. But I'll try to get, what I'll try to do is have everything ready and have you a copy at the work session. So you have it to view for the week before we come back together. And then that way, if there's questions or things that we need to look at specific, we'll have those in hand to do that.
One, one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Have you looked into the, the fellow in Tennessee about the, the vehicles, the county vehicles?
Um, I have not called him yet because I was really waiting on what number we're gonna ask for. So that was the only reason I was waiting.
Yeah, he reached after me again and said he had it. And had no response.
Yeah, that, that was it though, because um, I think the request was for sixteen, I think is what they requested. So I was trying to make sure that when we were looking at numbers, I didn't wanna ask him for too many or too few. Um, but I can just get a, like a general quote from him.
Probably, probably, probably wouldn't matter one or sixteen.
Right.
You done yet? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion. Any sec? I'm prepared. It's hot in this building.
Um, it was, it was cold this morning.